Because, no, 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 we, I remember we talked about it. No, I'm good with this, but then I just want to make sure I'm not speaking too quiet for the back row to hear me, so I will do it.
Okay. So these are our mic wrangler mics?
Yep, and we will have people that will help with that. I know Mo said she would, right here, and we'll get Brad to help with it, so. Where's the thumb drive? Can I pull it? Thank you. Sure, Brad, you're in charge of, uh, mic wrangling, thank you. I signed you up. Oh. Are we ready?
It takes about three seconds.
Sure. I got him. So are we ready then? Okay, all right. Well, thank you for coming today. Uh, my name's Eric Fritsch. I am, uh, the Chair of the Campus Carry Task Force for the university. I'm also Professor and Chair of the Department of Criminal Justice at UNT. Uh, y'all hear me okay in the back row? Okay, 'cause I'm wearing a mic, but that's for that. That's, that's for the video recording that's occurring, so, once we get to the questions and answers part, we'll have microphone wranglers come by for your comments, so we can get them on the, on the video and audio tape. So, just as a way of introduction of what we're here to do, is, is I am one of a 23-member task force that has been appointed by the President to develop, uh, what we refer to as our Campus Carry policy, and so the ability for concealed handgun license holders to, uh, carry guns onto campus beginning August 1, 2016. And so, in the room today are a few other of our task force members. We have Mo McGinnis, Dean of Students. We have Ed Reynolds, Chief of Police. We have Brad Scott from Emergency Ma-- uh, Risk Management, I'm sorry. I get eat, 'cause I'm in PACS, we have Emergency Management, Risk Management. And then we have Lieutenant David Owens with the Police Department, and anybody else that I missed? Okay. So, what we're gonna do today is, uh, one, we're constrained on time. The other ones, we've never set a time limit on, so we just let them roll. So I'm gonna try to be quicker on the PowerPoint slide, so that we leave, uh, significant time for you to have questions, comments, feedbacks, engage in a dialogue, et cetera, 'cause really that's the whole point of, of us meeting with town, uh, these Town Hall meetings, is to really get the input from the campus community about what they would like to see within the policy. And the reason why we're time constrained is a class starts in here at 2:00. So, y'all are, uh, very busy out here, there's hard to get a classroom, so, there's a class, people are gonna be coming in wanting to learn stuff, so, we're gonna get out of here. So, what I'm gonna do today is, I'm gonna run through the PowerPoint slides, maybe a little bit quicker than I have been in a couple of the other Town Halls, but they are on our, they are, the, the slides are on our website, they're campuscarry.unt.edu, so the entire presentation is sitting there, if I skip through something, or if you, uh, wanna go back and check on anything. So, what we're gonna do today, I already did number one, introduce. I wanna make sure that we go over the Campus Carry law requirements, so there's, uh, consistency and, and clarity in what it is that the law is requiring UNT to do, and what our options are. Wanna talk about concealed handgun license requirements in Texas a little bit, just because those are the individuals who will have the ability to carry on campus come October, uh, come August 1, 2016. Talk a little bit about the data, so what do we know about CHL holders? Talk a little bit about that. And then the estimated impact on UNT, so we've got four parts to cover. First part is the Campus Carry law requirement, so, what does Senate Bill 11 require the University of North Texas and other state universities to do? First thing is, is that this has been explored previously in legislative sessions, it just so happens that in this past legislative session, it was enacted, uh, wasn't pa-- it was passed, it was signed by Governor Abbott, and so now we have what we refer to as Campus Carry. And what Campus Carry is, is it allows concealed handgun license holders, so it's limited to what we refer to as CHL. CHL holders to carry a concealed handgun on or about their person while they are on campus, and again, once the law becomes effective, which is August 1, 2016. So from a timeline perspective, it's on another slide, but I'll discuss it now and just kinda skim through it when we get there. From a timeline perspective, our 23-member task force is, is tasked, charged by the President to create the draft Campus Carry policy. We want that to be a consultative process, so we're reaching out through these Town Hall meetings to get input from the campus community, faculty, staff, and students, to hear what they want within the policy, and what they are interested in being what we're referring to as gun-free zones, which I'll get to in a, in a few minutes. We will then hand off that draft policy to President Smotrich in the middle of December. He will then review it, make any changes. It then goes to our Board of Regents in February 2016 for any modifications and then approval, and then it is a final policy. Then from February 2016 to August 1, 2016, all the different departments and entities on campus that are involved with this, so UNT PD, Risk Management, Student Affairs, Dean of Students, Housing, et cetera, will become involved in the training and education process on the Campus Carry policy, so that's kind of what we're doing between now and the, and the effective date of the law. Just as a point of clarification, and there's another point and another slide on it, but just a point of clarification, is that what we're referring to today and what is going to be allowed on the UNT campus and at Discovery Park, obviously, uh, is Campus Carry, and that's the concealed, concealed handgun by a CHL holder. It will not involve what is referred to as open carry. So, open carry is kind of like in a holster exposed in plain view, like a police officer has. That law actually becomes effective January 1, 2016. So we will have open carry in the state of Texas, January 1, 2016. It will not apply to UNT, because institutions of higher education are specifically excluded by statute from open carry. So sometimes people use both of those terms. We're not talking about open carry, 'cause it will not exist on this campus. We're talking about Campus Carry, because it will exist on this campus, which is kind of the bolded last point. UNT's gonna abide by the requirements of the law. That's our charge from the President. Create a policy that meets the intent of the law and takes into consideration our campus community, and so, we are going to abide by what the law requires us to do. So, what does it require? Well, I like to be redundant sometimes, because I wanna make sure it's crystal clear, but that first, first point is redundant. I've said it now, I think, two, three times already, but we're dealing, but, we're talking about, once the law becomes effective, we're dealing with Campus Carry involving CHL holders carrying a concealed handgun on or about their person while on campus. So that's the limited population that we are dealing with. We do have the ability to restrict certain areas from Campus Carry, and that's where we, we want to hear your thoughts on everything, but we are particularly interested in where you think we should create what, just from a conversation standpoint, we're referring to as gun-free zones. So the law allows a university to carve out, they don't call them this, but gun-free zones, areas in which concealed handgun license holders cannot carry on campus. And so, we need to engage in that dialogue after this presentation and get your thoughts and opinions on it. But, as the Power, the next point says, we cannot establish the restrictions, the gun-free zones can't be so broad that they nullify the effect of the law. They nullify the intent of the law, and that's specifically stated in the Campus Carry law requirements, is that we can't be so restrictive. So in other words, we can't say, "No classrooms," because no classrooms would mean students with CHLs can't come to class, faculty with CHLs can't come to class. It basically nullifies the effect of the law, and it's not gonna pass muster, whether that's through the President, or the Board of Regents, or we gotta report every two years to the Legislature. It's just not gonna happen that way. So we have to be strategic in identifying these areas, we have to have reasons for identifying these areas as gun-free zones, and then, as the middle slide says, we have to give people effective notice. So you've been to restaurants and places that have signs that say, you know, you cannot consider, carry a concealed handgun, we have to give effective notice. So notices will be going up, whether, if it's an entire building that is restricted, or an area of a building, the notice will be going up. And, just to fast forward, and then I'll go back, that's the notice that will go up. It basically says, "You cannot carry at this location." So, after doing what we're doing today, and others, we're doing seven Town Hall meetings overall, and then we also have, our website is up, and in that, on that website is a Share Your Thoughts web form, that you can anonymously say anything you would like to, to the committee. Those responses are all gathered and presented to the committee. We also have, uh, campuscarry@unt.edu email address that you can provide input, so after what I just referred to as the consultative process, so all of that combined, we'll draft a policy, and then the President is going to establish the rules that are regarding Campus Carry at UNT. Like I said before, our due date to him is December 15. There are provisions within the law also, that allow universities to, uh, establish rules regarding the storage of handguns in residence halls, and so, we have a subcommittee of our larger 23-member group that is looking at that, and how we, we can deal with CHL holders that are students living in our residence halls, and I've got a slide later talking about that as well. And again, redundancy sometime is a good thing, we're talking about an effective date for the law of August 1, 2016. People cannot carry concealed handguns on campus that are CHL holders right now. August 1, 2016 is when it will take effect. So, as I've already mentioned, goes from the President's Board of Regents, they will meet in February 2016. They can amend the rules, they can do whatever they want to, whatever amendments are final. That's the way the law is written, so the Board will make the final decision on the rules. We'll publish them, we're required by, so it's Campus Carry law requirements, we're required to distribute them, and we'll distribute them to all students, faculty, staff, employees, publish it on our website. Then, September 1, 2016, and every two years thereafter, we have to submit a report to the Legislature that basically identifies our gun-free zones and the reasons why those gun-free zones exist, and so those, that is also required in the law. Few other things, just, that are related to Campus Carry but aren't tied specifically to the Campus Carry law. One, we, UNT, there's no one on the UNT campus that can revoke the right of a CHL holder to carry on campus. That responsibility for suspension and revocation of your CHL license rests solely with the Texas Department of Public Safety. And there's rules, and if someone violates those rules, Texas DPS will take care of them, but we, as a campus, cannot revoke someone's right as a CHL holder to carry on campus. We can carve out those gun-free zones, but we can't say, "You have done something bad, and you can't carry on campus any longer." It's not, it's not allowed. Once the law is effective, it, it, it will be criminal for a CHL holder to basically display their handgun, so, plain view, so that will be against the law, so if that happens, UNT PD can be called and they can take care of that. In addition to that, uh, we, we obviously have to give effective notice, um, and when we give effective notice and a concealed handgun license holder carries within that gun-free zone, that's against the law as well. So there's still gonna be two things that are criminal, either cons, cons, carrying your weapon as a concealed handgun license in a gun-free zone, or showing it in plain view. As I mentioned before, open carry, Campus Carry, two different things. Open carry, not happening on this campus, open carry, not happening on any campus, it is specifically excluded, uh, by law, but we will have Campus Carry. And, we do not, this has come up, and we put it in the PowerPoint slides, but we do not, UNT does not have the legal authority to require a CL, a CHL holder to self-identify, so we will not know which faculty, staff, and students are CHL holders and are therefore carrying a weapon on campus. The only people that have the legal authority to ask are the police. All right, so that's the requirements. So, let's talk a little bit about CHL requirements, so how you get a CHL, because this is who the, the law applies to, and basically what I'm trying to convey with these few slides is, there's a lot of restrictions to get a CHL, and there's a lot of, there's a process to it, and, and so, first and foremost, you have to be 21 years of age. And we'll talk about that again when we get to the Housing Residence Hall part, but you gotta be 21 years of age, uh, to be, uh, at least initially eligible. You have to go through training, pass a written exam, pass a proficiency demonstration, in other words, discharging, shooting, your handgun, and all of this has to be done by DPS, Texas Department of Public Safety-certified CHL instructor. Some other additional eligibility requirements, besides, uh, just being 21 and going through the class, is, no, no prior felony convictions, no Class A or B misdemeanor convictions in the last five years, you're not currently charged with an A or B misdemeanor, or with a, uh, under felony indictment, you're not a fugitive from justice, you're not a chemically dependent person, capable of exercising sound judgment with respect to the proper use and storage of the handgun, haven't misrepresented anything in the application process, Texas Department of Public Safety conducts a background investigation. And then I put on there, it's in verified print, but the website for eligibility and eligibility factors. All I do is this, I get into Google and I put Texas Department of Public Safety, concealed handgun license, and poof, there's the website. But, this is just kind of a snapshot, okay? We can't talk about all the intimate details of what it takes to get a CHL, 'cause it's fairly complex. But, what we're putting up here, and why I'm putting it up here, is, is that, I always say this at the end, is, is that, based upon all these rules and restrictions, CHL holders are exceedingly law-abiding citizens, because they have to be, to get the license, and they have to continue to be, to maintain the license, otherwise DPS will revoke it from them, and suspend their ability to be a CHL holder. What do we know about these people? What do we know about CHL holders? About 3% of the population in Texas has a CHL. They have a tendency to be older, so 86% are over the age of 30, about 2/3 of them are over the age of 40, but 3% is the magic number, 'cause we use that later in the presentation, so about 3% of Texas residents have a CHL. I said, uh, already, they're exceedingly law-abiding citizens, so I've got a couple slides that are Texas Department of Public Safety data on convictions of CHL holders, and they were, they published this report on their website, the same website that has the eligibility and eligibility one. 2013 is the latest data, um, welcome to criminal justice, it usually runs two years behind on data. 2013 is the latest, unless it's been up in the last four or five days, but when I checked, 2013 is the latest available, we don't have 2014 data. But, basically what it's showing is, is that of all the convictions, so criminal convictions in this state, for all the offenses we have in this state, there were about 51,000 of those in 2013. Of those 51,000 criminal convictions, 158 of them were CHL holders. Again, the message to me, or the evidence to me, is, is that they are exceedingly law-abiding citizens, when 1/3 of 1% of all criminal convictions in the state involve CHL holders, even though they represent, um, 3% of the population. What people are, I believe, what I've heard, at least, from the two Town Halls that we've done, in particular the Student Town Hall, is that people are most concerned about active shooters, and they're most concerned about a potential spike in violence, because concealed handgun license holders will have, uh, will be armed on campus. And so, we use this slide to really demonstrate that that's highly unlikely, because what this does is it takes, from a criminal justice standpoint, these are kind of our major violent crimes, so, we keep stats on these through the FBI every year, except for terroristic threat, murder, sexual assault, robbery, aggravated assault, and then I put terroristic threat on there as well, but we have, basically, major violent crimes. Total convictions is everyone in the state. So overall, in the state in 2013, there were 13,000, that column adds up to 13,764. Pretty sure, somewhere close to that, 13,764. Total convictions, how many of those people were CHL holders? 31. 31 of them. So 0.225% of the violent criminal convictions in this state were with, involving CHL holders. So again, it's very unlikely that they are going to, uh, commit an act of, act of violence that I know people are concerned about. So what are we estimating for, for UNT? Well, we use that 3% rule, we got about 42,000 students and employees, so 37,000 students, 5,000 employees, roughly. So we're looking at probably about 1,260 CHL holders, just using that 3% standard for the Texas population. When we look specifically at residence halls, uh, 'cause that's an issue, and that's an area in the law, that the law specifically states, we can establish provisions regarding the carrying of concealed weapons inside of residence halls. We've got about 6,200 students in residence halls this semester, but only about 500 of them are over the age of 21. And we put 21 there, because that's the minimum age of eligibility. You still gotta be, no felony convictions, no A, B misdemeanors, et cetera, et cetera, but, less than, about 500 of them are over the age of 21. Going back a couple slides, with 86% of the, uh, CHL holders in the state being over the age of 30, we don't expect, again, we can't ask people to self-identify, but we don't expect to be, there to be very many students with a CHL living in our residence halls. But, like I said at the beginning, we have a subcommittee that is specifically dealing with that issue, and dealing with the parameters of how we're going to deal with CHL holders that live in residence halls. Also, CHL isn't new. Campus Carry's new, but CHL is not. Concealed handgun licenses became available in this state in 1997. So we looked back at UNT PD records to see, have we had CHL people violating the law by bringing their guns onto campus? And, as it says there, UNT PD records, um, show that there's been no cases since 1997, that's when the concealed handgun license law came into effect. Last thing, before we open it up for questions, comments, discussion, is, is that, we're not alone. We are one of eight states that has Campus Carry. The one with the longest history of it is Colorado. Uh, they were, they passed Campus Carry in 2003, and so, looking back at their experience, they're now 12 years of experience. Uh, Colorado State, in the 12 years since Campus Carry became, uh, law, in Colorado, has had no incident, no incidences in which, uh, CHL holder has displayed or discharged their firearm on campus. University of Colorado Boulder has had one incident, and that involved an employee at the dental school showing her weapon to a fellow employee, and it accidentally discharged, and then she was fired. So 12 years of, of experience, at least from Colorado, and one incident on two major state campuses, state universities. Colorado State's got over 30,000 people, just like we do, they're a little smaller than us, but still, two major state institutions of higher education. So, we're gonna chat here in a minute, we're gonna hear your opinions, um, you may be thinking, "Well, why aren't we taking notes?" Well, we're recording, because I don't wanna be taking notes while I'm trying to talk to you, and all that kinda stuff, so we're recording this. This, the recordings will go, they're posted on our website, so they go to everybody, but all 23 members of the task force will be able to, uh, view them. We will also be taking notes off of the videos, so that we gather your input and ideas, but we have campuscarry.unt.edu, it's up and running. We will continue to provide updates on that. The webcasts, all these Town Halls are on there, the 23, the list of the 23 members' uh, task force is there, the list of the Town Hall meetings there, overview of the law, a link to the actual law, et cetera. Some people, um, I know, don't like to talk in public, and so you may want to share, you may be here today and wanna share something with us, but you just don't, or perhaps, we got an hour, we run out of time. So, there's a Share Your Thoughts web form on the Campus Carry website, fill it out, it comes to us, all 23 members of the committee will review it. In addition, we have an email address, campuscarry@unt.edu, so, if you don't get to say your thoughts today, you can use either of those avenues, or, if you're like me, and strokes of genius come to you at 2:00 in the morning out of nowhere, then, fill out the form, get on the website, email us, okay, and just continue that dialogue. Thanks for listening, kinda ran through that really quickly, but, we've got about an hour before the next, before the class comes in, so any questions or comments? We also have members of the committee here, so if I'm not the best person to answer the question, we'll pass it along. We do ask that you speak into a microphone, so we have two microphone wranglers around that will give you the microphone, so that it can be picked up onto the videotape that we are doing. I know I didn't answer everything, so.
All right, um, okay, good.
Yeah, you're not gonna be able to hear it, like I can't hear mine, but it's going into the.
All right, excellent. So, um, your task force is UNT Denton location or campus-specific? UNT system overall has more campuses, so, um, the first question is, will the decisions out of UNT Denton, out of that task force, be, um, the guideline for all other locations? And specifically, the Office of the Board of Regents, um, I assume there's no CHL law applicable there, because it's not on a campus? The second item is, um, it's Campus Carry. We have, uh, several thousand people which are faculty and staff, uh, which, some of which have nothing to do with students. So what are the special considerations for CHL and usage, um, in an office environment? One example here is, uh, the workplace of, uh, UNT system ITSS, which is a whole floor of offices. How we gonna deal with that? Because all what we hear, basically, pretty much is, uh, student-related, so I think that whole segment of faculty and staff, um, seems to be left out in all of the considerations.
Okay, so, let me answer both, see if I get it, see if I, uh, answer completely, and we'll see if anybody else wants to add. and we'll see if anybody else wants to add something else to it. We, by law, we're largely acting as independent entities. We have three campuses, and we have system offices. The system office is not an institution of higher education, so it really doesn't apply to them. So, we're dealing with three campuses. We're dealing with UNT Denton, and we're dealing with UNT Dallas, and then we're dealing with the UNT Health Science Center. And so, we're largely by law independent in the sense that the president gets to make the standards, but there is a system-level committee that I sit on, Chief Reynolds sits on, Elizabeth Witt sits on, and then people from the other campuses, where we're trying to exchange ideas. I mean, we're not, we don't, there's no requirement that we copy what the others are doing, but we're at least exchanging ideas. And then we have some unique aspects to our campus, like residence halls. Nobody else has them, so we have some unique aspects. So, there's an exchange of ideas, I guess I would say, between them. But we all have the opportunities to carve out, for example, with our gun-free zones, what works for our campus community. Because what may work for our campus community may not work for the others, and that is fine. So, that's the first answer. The second question, refresh my memory? And I'll repeat it in.
Yeah, faculty, staff.
That's right, faculty, staff. So, yeah, okay. So, really what the policy is about, it is, what the law is about, it's location-specific. So, what I'm reading into your question, what I'm reading into your question, and tell me if I'm wrong, is that we have system employees here. How does that work with them? It's location-specific. So, if they are sitting on the UNT Denton campus, which we are right now, then those policies apply to them, whether they're system employees or whatever. Because just like we have Office of General Counsel, you know, over in the Gateway Center, and we have ITSS, like you said, here, and we have Human Resources somewhere, but they're somewhere on with campus. It's location. So, all those rules are not employee-specific, they're location-specific. So, they will buy, have to abide by the campus carry rules.
..............................
Okay, so, I'm gonna repeat it, because it didn't get on the microphone. The what?
Business Services Center.
Business Service Center, Woodhill.
Which is not under the UNT Denton campus location.
Yeah, so how do we deal with Woodhill? Yeah, so, how are we dealing with Woodhill? I know, I remember it coming up as like, we need to take this under consideration of how do we deal with Woodhill? And I think there was one other location on there, because they're, they're not technically on campus, but they are affiliated with UNT. So, are they considered part of campus?
And the legal office, the, yes. And the legal office is helping us on this committee as we look at some of the legal questions. But, at least in my mind, Woodhill is owned by UNT. So, it's not a system property. We just choose to lease that to different entities.
So, with that said, the campus carry policy of UNT applies to.
Well, I think there's a legal question on whether or not it applies, because you've also got some other businesses there as well. And in, in the private sector, or public sector outside the university, open carry is allowed, right? So, but on UNT property, it's not allowed. So, I think there's still some questions that we need to work with. That's a good point, something that we'll need to look at when we write our policy. About space that we don't teach classes, but maybe we lease to a private, does that still apply? And I don't.
Even in Frisco, where we're gonna teach classes and.
Right. Well, it will absolutely apply to Frisco.
Well, it's a shared location.
Well, it's a shared location, but we will lease it.
So, it's under the owner.
The portion of the building that we lease will fall under concealed carry. Because that is specifically for a teaching purpose, it is part of the university.
So, our leased space, that 38,000 square feet of leased space, is UNT property. And so, the campus carry policy we developed will apply there. Yes, and we have, and just to kinda, as a broader point, we have kind of a laundry list of questions we've inquired legal input from, and the Office of General Counsel is helping with that. Because there are these, you know, it's, it sounds simple, campus carry, period. And you start looking at it, and it's very complex. And where does it apply, and who owns what, and what about system employees? And so, we've, we have a laundry list of questions that have been put to legal counsel. It's not, you know, just as simple as concealed handgun license, bring it on campus, carve out gun-free zones. Thank you.
Thank you. As far as the gun-free zones go that we're proposing, I haven't been to any of the other meetings. So, what have been maybe some of the proposed locations that are maybe making the list of the gun-free zones?
Well, I, I mean, I will answer that, but I also want, again, to recommend to y'all to either now or through our web form, talk about Discovery Park, because no one has.
Okay.
Okay, so, but, yeah, no one has. So, we've done a staff, we've done staff one, and we've done a student one. And during those discussions, I don't recall any location at Discovery Park being mentioned. But, so for, so, I'd, I wanna hear it.
I would have a couple to propose now, if that's.
Okay, so let me answer the question, then I wanna, then maybe we can just start rattling them off. But what we've heard is some examples, Child Development Lab, that's our daycare center on campus, McConnell Hall, that's where the TAM students live. And so, that's their residence hall, they're minors. So, we've heard McConnell Hall. We've heard Chestnut Hall, or particularly the third floor of Chestnut Hall, because that's where the counseling services for campus are. I mean, we've heard Marcus Hall, because the international students are there, and there may not be as much clarity to them regarding campus carry. So, we've, we've heard places. But I really, since we have this opportunity with y'all, I really wanna hear about Discovery Park. So, you have a couple of ideas.
Well, I worked at the gym when I first started going to school here, and I think that the gym facility would be one candidate for a location. There's a very high rate of theft at that facility. Not, not high rate, like horrible, but it happens. People put stuff in a wall locker, you lose a phone, you lose, it happens. I think zones like that, where you actually have to remove your clothing, or if you're gonna go work out, and you need to put stuff in a location, those are not proper storage locations for a firearm. And I think with that being the kind of facility that you would go into and remove your firearm, and it not being properly stored, that should be considered as a.
So, are we talking Pole Recreation Center, or is there?
Correct, yeah, Pole Recreation Center, yes.
Got it, okay, I just wanna make sure.
It's part of the campus area. And then, you said a different board, or a different group was discussing residence halls more in-depth? As of right now, the students that are over the age of 21 are not allowed to have a gun in that facility, right?
Right.
Okay. I would maintain that because those rules are in place for all the residence halls, that no one's allowed to have a firearm, whether CHL or not, that we should try to maintain that for the residence halls. And this would cover your international students, this would cover your TAM students, this would cover all the residence halls. I think with, even those, that small group of students in the residence halls, it would be over the age of 21 that could possibly have a CHL. My time in the military showed that the students around, or I say students, soldiers at that point, around, that were under the age of 21, that might not had a CHL to be allowed, would maybe still come in contact with those firearms, being that it's a residence, you know, and you're, if it is your residence, I don't have to conceal it anymore supposedly, right? And it's my residence. And that would be kinda hazy.
Right.
And I think that, you know, a student that's 21 rooming with a student that's 18, well, I can have my gun on my nightstand in my room. I think you kinda run into an issue where now you're allowing some mishaps to happen for those students that wouldn't be authorized.
And we did, we did hear some of that at the staff town hall regarding residence halls, because some of the staff were working in residence halls. I can kinda tell you a little bit about what other states have done, and therefore, kind of probably what, what the, I'm not on that subcommittee, but what the subcommittee is considering. Some states that already have campus carry require the residents to live in single occupancy rooms. And they require them, you know, you said it's a residence, you can put it on a nightstand, but they require them to lock it up in a hotel safe, basically, at all times when they are in the residence halls. So, they can have it in the residence, basically take it into their room, but put it in the hotel safe, and it's written into the housing rules. And so, can't be in the desk door, can't lay it on the desk, because we heard similar concerns from staff about, you know, you've got 18-year-olds run around, you've got shared bathrooms evidently, and some of the, even the single occupancy. Some states have required hotel safes for those that have CHLs. Then it becomes an issue of, well, then they have to self-identify, and can we make them self-identify, which we're not supposed to? And it becomes the legal issue, which is another question that we have on the list for the Office of General Counsel. Can we have at least the people applying to live in the residence hall self-identify so we make sure we put them in the right locations, et cetera? Some states, and I think Chief Reynolds wants this, but some states don't allow them in the residence halls at all, but allow them to be maintained in a centralized location, usually at the police department. And you can go in and check it out and check it in, but you can't bring it into your residence hall.
That's the system I'm familiar with.
It is?
Yes, yeah. Military posts, lots of times those that lived on residence, where they had to check into a central storage facility, a proper storage facility, not, you know, someone's nightstand.
Right, all right. Okay. Thank you.
So, first, one of the things on the students is, I think one of the things that your slide was missing was, if you apply to the 3% rule to the students, that's really only 15 students. You said 500 students, 3% rule is really only considering 15 students. So, just as a, as a side note, it might be something to add for there. I have handouts for the committee, and I have, I have my notes for you as a chair. So, as I refer to these, I'll provide these, and y'all are welcome to them now, on the handouts. So, let me talk about Discovery Park. I'm a, I'm a Regents professor here in the Department of Learning Technologies. We've been out here for eight years at Discovery Park. I've been on campus since 1994. I was a student at the University of North Texas before that, for both my bachelor's and master's degree. So, the UNT, or I'm sorry, the police response time to Discovery Park, if you have a priority one, you have a, you have an active shooter, is seven and a half minutes. We have no armed security here on campus. So, our, our hope is UNT Police or UNT Police Department are able to get here. My, my information shows that, that number. And I'm pretty sure of that number.
So, can I ask you a question?
Absolutely, sure.
So, is your, it's not a question, I guess, but. So, you're, the, the point or the takeaway for the committee is, is a request that there's UNT PD presence on campus here at Discovery Park?
I think number one, there should, there should already be.
Okay, okay.
So, that's, that's part of it. And I, you know, but I'll continue and say, we should have CHL considerations throughout this building and location with minimizing or no gun-free zones in here. It doesn't keep someone from carrying a, or a goblin to carry a gun in. It just keeps good guys from carrying one in. So, so from that, from that statement, I have in here US Department of Justice and FBI's study of active shooter incidences in the US. So, this is from page 11. The combined actions of citizens, law enforcement ended, and for 160 incidences, in 65 of those, 100, or I'm sorry, in 65 of those, the citizen engagement or the shooter ended the engagement. On page 13, you'll find a graph of this. 21 of the incidences ended in armed citizens safely and successfully restraining the shooter. 11 involved armed principals, teachers, and other staff who confronted the shooter and the threat. Five ended in armed citizens who were not law enforcement, ending the threat. Individuals involved in the shootings were citizens with valid permits, armed security guards at churches, airline counters, and federal-managed museums and school boards. In two of those instances, it was armed off-duty police officers. In 64 incidences where the duration of the incidences could be asserted, 64 of those incidences ended in five minutes or less, with 23 ending in two minutes or less. So, if you go back to the first response time, the best hope we have here is a first aid. It's going to be over by that point. So, I also have a handout here from Students for Concealed Carry, the Texas Legislative Handouts that they gave. For the committee, I would ask the committee particularly to look at page one, and they make arguments about why campus carry should be allowed. Now, I wanna note that Chris Brown is the founder of ConcealedCampusCarry.org, and he was a political science student here at UNT. So, he started that website after Virginia Tech. So, please, again, look at page one. Our Texas State Capitol, and we know we have arguments on the Capitol. We know that there's discussions. We know that there are all the things of free speech that we value here on campus. But I talked to them as early as today, just to make sure that my reading of everything was correct, and talked to the sergeant on duty. So, CHL licensees are able to carry on, on the grounds, within the Capitol Building, and in any publicly accessible areas, including legislative offices, as any other citizen is allowed to do, and the third floor gallery. There are times in which the third floor gallery will be a check-in point. And it should also be noted that state, house, and senate, senators are allowed to carry on the floor during any debate. You can find this under Texas Administrative Code, Title 37, Part 1, Chapter 3, and I think it's J, but it's 3.146. So, I'll go back to three points, or really four that I wanna make. Our self-defenses are right, and our campus security right now can't protect us here. This, this law that's been passed allows us other options. People may choose, and we saw in the later, one of the later incidences in Oregon, where CHL carriers decided not to engage the shooter. And that's certainly something that can be decided, but that's their right to make that decision. I think restrictions here at Discovery Park should be minimized to the greatest extent to allow the best allowing us to protect ourselves, and at least provide us the rights that have been given to our own state Capitol. And I'll finalize and say, disarming the good guys is gonna keep bad guys out of these safe areas. So, again, that, that gives you information. The things that I said, I have handouts for the committee and my notes on there, as you could do.
Okay, thank you. And we'll take them, and we'll make sure they get to all 23 people.
All right, so real quick, as a student who's under 21 until I graduate, so basically, I represent the students that won't get to concealed carry while I'm still here at UNT. I don't feel safe until August 1st, because we don't have, like you said, any officers that can carry. So, what are some things we're doing to make our campus more safe? Because with like, he said, a seven and a half minute reaction time, I'm just a sitting duck until then. So, like, what are we doing now, as of like, when January 1st comes? There's gonna be open carry.
On campus.
What would we do, okay, well, like, for the whole state? But what are we doing for on-campus, since we still can't carry until then? Are we just gonna keep things as is, and hope that nothing happens? And just wait until August 1st? And what is the intent with having the delay until August 1st? Why is it not January 1st, just like regular?
I don't know the answer to the last question. You know, when, when a law is passed, it has an effective date. Why August 1, 2016, I don't know. I mean, most laws, criminal laws, which is what I see as a criminal justice professor, usually have either January 1 or September 1 effective date. I don't know if they moved August 1, just because school starts in August, and so they moved it to August 1. I don't, I don't know the answer to, to that one. Regarding your first question, I don't know if anybody else wants to respond, but from, from, from the committee's standpoint, you know, we're not, there, there won't be any changes made on campus until the policy takes effect. Policy doesn't take effect until February 2016 with the Board of Regents. And then, during those, that six-month timeframe is really when the educational and training process will take place for our students, faculty, and staff, that will involve UNT PD and risk management, Dean of Students, et cetera. PD and risk management, dean of students, et cetera. And then, the law will become effective August 1, 2016.
So, is there any way it could be, like, reconsidered from August 1st until February 1st? Is there, is that, I mean, it's probably too late for that, but is there any way?
No, because the legislature makes that decision. Yes, the legislature makes that decision. So, when, anytime any law is passed, like, the very last line is effective, and so it's the law. So, we can't move it up, yeah.
I also have one more question, too.
Sure.
So, like, what would be the point behind restricting students in residence halls not to carry, since the general proximity or, like, general age limit is under 21? So, for those 500 students or so that could carry, what's the point of hindering them? Because if they want to and they have the right, they should be able to, as long as we put restrictions, like they can't, you know, room with someone under 21 without putting in, like, a safe, like you said, or rooming on their own. Like, what would be the point of even, like, trying to take that right away from them? If there's such few to begin with?
From the task force standpoint, we haven't made any of those decisions. We don't know how we're going to handle residence halls. So, what I conveyed to you regarding hotel safe, single occupancy rooms, central location, et cetera, or how other states have had, that have had campus carry have dealt with the issue. Because we don't, we as a committee, purposefully, have made absolutely no decisions, except to get up a website and get out some frequently asked questions on our website, and some a way to get feedback from people, and set up these town hall meetings, because we want to hear from y'all, faculty, staff, and students, before we start crafting the policy. Residence halls will be part of that policy. What restrictions will be placed on the students that are CHL holders that reside in residence halls? We don't know, because we haven't gotten that far yet.
Okay, then I think I would just suggest that maybe it should be considered to not restrict it from areas, like, for Discovery Park, I would advise that there be no places that it should be non-open carried. I feel like it should, all of Discovery Parks should be open, so, like, if I can voice my opinion, that's just.
No, that is, no. That's part of why we're here, thank you.
And I wanted to follow up on your first question in regards to, I don't feel safe until August 1st. I'm going to tell you, there are a number of different resources available to you already. You have the university police, you have the Denton Police, if it's something off-campus, but also, we have the care team. So, if somebody causes you to make the hair on the back of your neck stand up, or causes you concerned because of something they're doing, you need to get one of us involved, the care team, or the police department, because we're more than happy to investigate, look at a situation, the community, police, different situations. Just because they're on-site doesn't mean they're going to arrest somebody, okay? And so, just because somebody's called into the care team, it might just be, hey, we're doing a welfare check, we're making sure that everything's okay. So, if somebody causes you heartburn, you need to get one of us involved, no matter when. Well, and I can't, I don't get a gun in a fast car and everything else, but there are usually, if you have concerns because somebody's acting differently, there are resources available to you, okay? Sure.
Alright, there are great points. Thank you very much for the detailed research. However, I'd like to hold against that, that you mentioned five people, five citizens who were CHL owners and were not in a first responder or law enforcement capacity, that were involved in deterring an active shooter. That's a very low count, I want to say. There's also probably extensive research to be found for all sorts of accidents or violencings that happen around weapons, whether it's with open carry or inside a home, or with CHL owners. I like your research, too, by the way, which made the point that most CHL owners are not involved in criminal activities, but I don't think it was showing things like accidents or mishandling. However, you had one example where a faculty was having an accidental discharge and subsequently got dismissed. So, while I do realize that in Texas, we are right to work, and basically can lose our job anytime, I wonder whether we're going to have policy decisions which dictate those things, mishandling of a firearm if you're a CHL, or accidents, or, you know, other things that happen out of that. In addition, if you're a student and you have those accidents, or you mishandle your firearm, not in a negligent way, are you going to be dismissed from campus? You know, yeah, you might lose your license, but what are other consequences out of that? I'm a foreign citizen, I live in this country since 17 years, I work for UNT, UNT System for the last six years. I feel very safe. So, I feel it's like a very sad statement, but a valid statement, when I hear somebody saying, "I don't feel safe here." And I don't know whether you specifically related that to Discovery Park here, to the long reaction time. A shorter reaction time might not deter a shooter that walks in here loaded with Keflar and is shooting things up. And so, I think I would feel more unsafe with more firearms on the campus or in a workplace environment. That's all I'm saying.
Thank you. Gentleman in the black shirt, he's had his hand up before, he's going to lose all the blood in his arms.
Just a kind of caveat with this guy said, in the US Supreme Court case, Warren versus the District of Columbia, the Supreme Court ruled that law enforcement officers are not legally held responsible to save your life. So, they don't have any legal precedents to run in and take a bullet for you. That's what the Supreme Court said. But also, I'm glad that you feel safe, I feel pretty safe, too, but I am not her, I'm also, you know, a veteran and a pretty big guy, you're also a pretty big guy. So, my feeling of safety has no impact on her feeling of safety. I feel pretty safe, you know, 90% of my life, whereas she could feel very uncomfortable in certain areas, and it's not my choice what she, how she can protect herself, or what makes her feel safe. That's part of, that's what our country was founded on, was the Bill of Rights, the individual freedoms, and our personal responsibilities to protect ourselves and our families. And thank you very much.
Thank you.
I just really kind of wanted to make a quick comment. A lot of times when you talk about this debate, about caring in general, there's one line that always comes up, and it's come up even here, about how people feel. "I feel safe, I don't feel safe." The truth about this is that you can feel safe and never actually be safe. You know, you can be safe, feel safe driving in your car until somebody clips you from behind. You know, just because you feel safe does not actually make you safe. And, you know, some people will say, "Well, I don't feel safe, you know, if other people have guns." Well, it's concealed. No one else is going to know that you have that firearm. If you expose that firearm, that is by law brandishing. So, if you don't know that the person around you have a firearm, and you've already established that it's very rare that somebody will be carrying a firearm, the odds that someone around you carrying is going to be low. And so, if you don't know who's carrying, the odds that somebody around you is carrying is low, why should you feel any less safe on UNT campus than you already do off-campus in Texas where people are carrying? Why should you feel less safe than you already are? Because you don't know. It's kind of the Schrodinger's cat, I mean, it's, same situation applies. Right now, we are allowing law-abiding citizens to carry firearms on campus. This is what campus carry is about. However, I submit that just because we don't know about it, we don't have statistics on it, people have carried firearms on campus illegally in the past. They've never gone away. They will never go away depending upon whatever the law is. The only thing you can control is whether the law-abiding citizens that we've already established with concealed carry laws, what we talked about, how they are already extremely law-abiding. The only thing that we can control is whether those law-abiding, good people are carrying. And, you know, what makes me feel safe isn't necessarily what's going to make anyone else feel safe. I was not into firearms before all these mass shootings started. I was not. They were never in my home, I didn't grow up with them, but I have them now, and it's specifically because of those incidences. I submit to you that no one is responsible for your safety more than yourself. You are responsible for taking care of your own safety, no one else. And it is up to you to provide for your safety. So, to just say that, hey, we're going to take away people's ability to provide for their own safety, it's, I hate to say it like this, but it kind of comes off a little bit selfish with that. I'm not trying to call anyone that, I'm really not. But I'm trying to say is, you have to think that, okay, just because it's not right for you, doesn't mean that you should take that right away from everyone else. And, you know, I'm honestly not trying to put anyone else down with that, I'm really not.
And just to clarify, I think it's clear, but just to make sure it's clear, the gun-free zones, as we refer to them as, first, they haven't been identified, but, two, they'll be very strategically identified. We can't have a very broad net cast, because it's going to nullify the law, which the law specifically says, "Don't do." So, they'll be very strategically identified with everyone's input, and then the task force taking all that input in, and then, we're going to have to justify it. I mean, certainly to the president of the Board of Regents, but also to the legislature every two years.
Anyway, I just wanted to share my opinion there.
Thank you.
Has any consideration been given to training? If anybody would like training, like, maybe the police department, you know, in gun safety or anything of that ilk?
We have discussed in general that once the policy becomes effective in February, when the Board of Regents rule on it, that we're going to put training and educational programs in place. The form of that training, or the topics of that training, haven't been identified. So, from your comment, I would take it as, you think it's a good idea to put gun safety training on the list of activities that we should provide to faculty, staff, and students, or perhaps at orientation, students coming in?
Sure, anybody who would like it, you know, just how to handle them, how to work them, and, you know, if possible, you know, if you want a CHL, you know, where or how, you know? I think that'd be a good idea.
Okay. Yeah, we haven't done anything specific on specific topics for training, but we'll get to that point as a committee.
So, for those of us, for those of you interested, there's a group called Texas Marksmen. We do offer CHL training, and every semester, we offer CHL training, and we also offer a firearm safety course as well. So, if you're interested in that, it's Texas Marksmen, 2015, 2016. You'll find a schedule of events where we do plan to offer, in fact, October the 24th, we have a CHL class that we'll be teaching, but we also do this once a semester, so we'll be doing it in the spring as well. So, we'll have a firearm safety course and a CHL course for those interested. Not trying to plug it, just trying in response to.
Thank you.
So.
I just wanted to say that, well, past couple months, probably the last six months, like, I've been teaching my girlfriend how to handle firearms safely. I've been around firearms since I was, like, six years old, and so I actually have no problem just teaching people general gun safety or anything like that. I really enjoy doing that. I just wanted to say that first. But another, I was going to actually respond, or kind of piggyback off of what he said about many people in Texas carrying already, is that I've been looking for a lot of the posted signs, the 3006 signs, that say you can't carry in this restaurant, or you can't carry on this establishment, and I have not found very many. And given the fact that there's 700,000 concealed carry holders in the state, give or take, I could be wrong a little bit off on that, I've never actually seen anyone carrying or noticed that someone was carrying concealed or anything like that. And for most of my life, I've been around firearms, but I've never really thought, given any thought to someone carrying concealed or anything like that. It was just, I just had no idea. And I feel like, for the most, honestly, when this law is passed and everything, a lot of people aren't going to notice any significant change whatsoever. Even if, like, 5,000 students start carrying, no one's going to know, because it's concealed carry. And I feel like there's not going to be any kind of difference on campus, as there would be if you go to Chili's or something, or where people are legally allowed to carry there. And, I don't know, that's just my opinion, and.
Thank you. She has a question? Yes, just so we can get it on to the video, videotape, but yes, it's a requirement.
In the areas of the university where the students or anybody should not be carrying a gun, have you all ever considered putting in metal detectors? Where if a student does come in, there's going to be some kind of a trigger to the police department, where they'll know? So, it won't be such a disaster.
You want to take that, or, I mean, somebody asked about metal detectors last time, which is at the staff meeting, which is why I'm looking at you, but.
No, thanks.
I mean, I know the answer, but.
Yeah, there's no locations, other than temporary locations, where we have certain high-risk parties, where we use them currently. And that's generally wandering, like they do at the airport or something like that. The concern I have with what you suggested is, it's hugely labor-intensive, and there are so many points of ingress and egress to every building we have, in order to make that truly effective, would take a huge amount of employees to cover that. If you don't believe me, just go to the courthouse and see how, how many people they have set up, just for one entrance point right there. So, I'm not saying we, it's not something we won't look at at some point, but I don't think that that's anything that's in the near future.
Thank you.
With the campus being so big, you know, we're going to have, or campus carry here, it should be least restrictive as possible. I mean, the law even prevents the university from trying to restrict campus carry from the entire campus, you cannot nullify it. I would just ask that the policies that we're going to focus on to go with this be logical, and really, those facilities that may need restriction of some kind, like I'd mentioned, it makes sense. For example, all these buildings, we have tons of entrances and exits that you're going to have to post if you were to make anything a restricted zone. Those locations that you might need to, that might be logically, hey, this is a smart idea that this should be a restricted zone. I think in policy, it should be very few, but it should be those that make sense to do so. The Polrec Center, like I mentioned, it only has one entrance and exit that they're actually allowed to come in and out to the gym. So, that would be a logical place, where everyone's going to go through the same door and see the same sign. That's all I'm asking, is for those policies not be kind of like, well, if you're in this area of this building, it's restricted. We don't need anything that's convoluted, we don't want to try to make it difficult, we want to make it as easy for, you know, students with or without CHL. That's all I'm asking.
Okay, thank you.
Has there been any recommendations to your group that would maybe kind of go that other way? Like, well, we need it here at this building, but we don't want it in the teacher's side, or we don't?
Not anything complex like that. I mean, for example, I'll give you the Child Development Lab as an example. It's currently in Matthews Hall, and people have brought that up before, but then somebody in the staff one, I believe it was the staff, recommended perhaps the entire building, just because there's children inside the building. Then we found from Darlene Callahan, who's on the committee, the space management guru on this campus, found out that the student, that the Child Development Lab is moving over to the Ming Green Village into a separate building, that that's all it will be. So, you know, we haven't heard too much about specific locations within buildings, with the exception of the Child Development Lab, and then, I think they said. And then I think they said the third floor of Chestnut is where the counseling and the psychological counseling and services are provided in Chestnut. But then most of what we've heard has been buildings, like McConnell Hall, those types, so it's the entire building. And, and we realize that, you know, I've used the term a few times here, but I've used it in the other ones, we have to be very strategic. And I think that's part of my role as chair, is, is to, certainly us as a committee, take the input of everybody, but then I'm sitting around a table with 22 other people that are gonna, we're gonna craft out these gun-free zones. And my job is to make sure that we are as strategic as possible in identifying those areas, and have sound justifications for this is why this location. One, it's required by law, we're gonna have to present it to the legislature, but we're gonna have to be very strategic. It's gonna have to be almost, for lack of a better term, but a academic term, evidence-based of why is this area restricted? And so, I mean, so I concur with what you have said, is, and that's our plan from the committee, and that's really the requirement of the law, is you gotta be strategic in your decision-making of these gun-free areas. But we haven't gotten to the point of identifying them yet, and, but we also have to be realistic from a CHL holder violation standpoint, that it's not, you know, these two offices here, and then you can walk six feet and it's okay, and then it's these seven offices, that's just gonna create a mess. And so it's gonna have to be strategic and logical and clear to everyone, CHL holders, not CHL holders.
Has there been any intent in the discussion of the policies as far as what punishments? Or I know you kinda mentioned it, you know, that if you break the rules, you need to know the rules first, so the rules do need to make sense. But if you do have a mishap, eh, I went into the wrong building. Look, I thought my class was in there, you know, and that, that's a zone that I'm not supposed to go in. What kind of policies may be used that would say, you know, a student needs to know that this building is a gun-free zone before they would register for a class in that building? Has any of that been discussed, where it's, now we need to come up with the system to let those know, hey, you know, this is part of your daily routine to go to this class, and this is a gun-free zone? How is that gonna be handled for those that may not come to the campus and go to that building, or whatever beforehand to not know?
Right, it's almost, so, cancer, the question is, no, we haven't finally discussed that. It's on, it's on the topic for discussion. I mean, I think of it the way that I, it's conjured up in my mind, it's almost like our parking map, you know, where you can park and where you can't. So we're gonna have to, there's gonna have to be an educational and training component of this, and people have already talked, advisors talked about it in the Staff Town Hall, that there needs to be part of orientation to students of what's gun-free and what's not gun-free. Regarding how do we handle the violations of it, is, is we're not, we briefly have discussed it in our committee, we've only met three times, we meet every other Friday. We briefly discussed it in the committee, and from what I heard from kind of the bosses, so Finley Graves, the provost, from the academic side of things, and then the dean of students side of things, is that basically it's a violation of policy. And so we don't need a separate section that says, this is the violation for violating this policy, this is the sanctions for violating this policy, because it's already handled in other parts of, you know, student code and responsibility, or, you know, I'm gonna use an old term, but the faculty handbook doesn't exist anymore, but the faculty policies, is that it's just yet another violation of policy, just like anything else would be. And it'll be handled according to those procedures, so we won't have a separate procedure just for this. And I know you grabbed the microphone so you wanted to say something.
We have a code of student conduct, and, and policies and procedures are violations of the code, all's already fallen there. There is no way for any violation of the code, no matter what it is, is it a cookie-cutter business? And so things are taken into consideration before we expel somebody, suspend somebody, put any of the disciplinary sanctions on them. And, and that's not gonna change for this policy as well. And so know that we have a conduct team that is trained very well in regards to what they look at and how they investigate, and things are taken into consideration. What, was it an accident? Was it malicious? Was it, I don't care where your gun-free zones are. A lot of those things change what we do in regards to sanctions. So yes, the code already exists, probably tweak it a little bit to make sure that we're looking at this policy as well as a couple of others. There's been a number of different policies passed by the legislature that we need to incorporate into the code, but it's already a violation of policy as it, as it stands. And so where do we go from there?
Okay, so it wouldn't be, let's say, a accidental discharge? That would not be a clearly defined term?
Automatic suspension.
Right. It's, it's always just gonna come down to violated policy?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
It's gonna be a violation of policy, whether that's a faculty, staff member, or a student, violation of policy. But then there may be a law that we need to worry about. So we'll let them...
There's administrative procedures that would fall in that as well.
So we're talking administrative procedures.
Yeah, I was trying to focus on the policy part of it. If it was gonna be for the school, you're gonna clearly define a set of parameters. Hey, if, if a concealed carry does this, are you in turn, I guess, asking, considering making your own sort of criminal laws to go with this policy? Or is it always just gonna be violation of policy? Blanket term?
Violation of policy.
Always.
It's violation of policy.
The criminal law will be any gun-free zones that the university creates with its policy, that the Board of Regents approves. If you go into one of those locations that's with that effect of notice, then that becomes a criminal violation.
Okay.
Right.
As far as I know, there is no policy at the moment, talking about the handling of firearms on campus. So if you're saying that the accidental discharge of a firearm or other things, which I, by the way, think is a different category than by accident walking into a gun-free zone, there's not gonna be at least a paragraph of policy stating that the mishandling of a firearm, as dictated by law and CHL, will have consequences or something. Because right now, there is no policy.
Yeah.
So, you know, there is a policy?
Wait, you need a microphone?
That talks about violation of certain area, the, well, basically our at-will policy, if you've ever read that policy. So there's about six things in there that you can be disciplined for. And if you violate criminal law, it would fall in one of those. So carrying a gun onto campus right now would violate what? Criminal law, currently.
But in the future, accidental discharge, I don't think is a violation of criminal law. It is an accident. I don't even know whether it's a...
I would think you'd almost have to have it un, it would have to be where it's not concealed anymore for you to have an accidental discharge. If it didn't, you're probably gonna blow something off important.
Which has happened, right?
It could happen. Don't get me wrong. Probably won't worry about getting your medical attention for something else other than that, but that would be kinda like Dr. McGinnis said, there's always a one-off. There's not one set rule that's gonna apply to everything. We would look at that individually on a case-by-case basis.
Yeah.
And no, if someone accidentally walks into a gun-free zone, does that mean we're gonna arrest everyone that does that? No, that doesn't mean we're gonna do that.
And we, you know, we have off-sogenial counsel involved in this, so certainly we'll have to see if there are holes in our policy that are created by this campus carry policy that need to be cleaned up, and maybe additional languages put in there. Yes, ma'am?
This question is concerning, once we have established, you know, gun-free zone areas, certain staff members on the university don't work in like one specific office. Facilities, for example, they come out and they go to many offices throughout the day. If they're called to do work in, say, third floor Chestnut, will the university vehicles have hotel safes-type things in the, in the university vehicles to lock up the firearms?
No, but, but you know what? No, it's actually a good que, I actually got, I actually got an email yesterday from a member of our janitorial staff that asked basically the same question, that, as I'm going about my duties at night, how is that going to be handled? And, and this is, these are all things, that we want the feedback, and we like to hear new things because we know we're gonna have to take them under consideration, and we gotta figure it out. So, so unfortunately, I don't have an answer for you, but fortunately, it's now on the list of things that we know we gotta figure out, that there's gotta be something that we do regarding this instance of people that really are mobile during the day. How do we handle those situations? We have, we have five minutes, and we got a class, so...
Most companies, if you're, you mentioned driving the university vehicle, right? Because you're in a company vehicle, you would have some sort of restriction saying that you can't have it in the company vehicle, right? That's most companies nowadays. So you would have to choose then to take your own vehicle to transfer around from campus. And then at that point, it would be, well, I'm going to a building where I can't, so you'd be in your vehicle. You could leave it in your vehicle. Sorry? Okay.
I'd like to just say real quick that we have areas, whether it's out here in Discovery Park or on main campus, where materials of a certain kind are handled. Labs, we have material science out here. I'm sure we have chemical areas or other areas where there are probably federal laws and regulations to not have a firearm there. So I would hopefully see that there are at least...
Good point.
Free areas in lab situations of that kind, right?
We've heard, we've, no, definitely, we've heard labs...
Always?
Yeah, we've heard labs before, labs with flammable chemicals, but I have not heard the federal law issue. Great point. We gotta figure out if there's federal laws governing any of our labs that prohibit firearms because that's...
You have workers, I'm missing the wrong term, but for example, facilities that, that works with dangerous materials or something like that, building security here, there's a slew of laws around regulations with dangerous substances and working, workplace safety and stuff like that.
Okay, thank you.
Very, very quickly, and, you know, the first thing that I said is about response here. We, we have great people at the gate doing, doing first looks for us, so I don't want, I don't wanna misconstrue that we don't have officers here, we just don't have armed response teams. And, and that's something that I, that I, you know, we, we have the chief here, that's something, you know, on record, you ask, so are you saying you need security on campus? Yes, we do. We need that between now and August and after August. It's something that we've been lacking for a long, for a long time as this campus has grown, and, and with all the access and such as that that we have here, it is an important piece. So I, so just a quick clarification. The other is, we, we've talked about some of the areas that shouldn't be, and quickly at Discovery Park, people will go cafeteria, library, those are the places that these shootings happen. Those are the places that I don't want to see the restrictions at. Those are the places that the armed response is needed the quickest, and the most lost of, loss of life is there. So, you know, as it's strategically, and I, and I'm using the terms, as it's strategically looked at of these zones, go back to our state capitol. Our state capitol has very few areas that legally licensed carriers can carry within our state capitol. They have many of the same concerns that we do. Our students over 21 in dorms, our 3% rule, 15 students or so. This isn't a, this isn't a piece to, you know, have, have big pieces on. And really for our CHL, we're looking at 1,400, I don't remember the slide, for, for CHL carriers. And, you know, as much access as we can provide these licensed individuals, please do, we need it. These are quick instances that don't get the response time in time to make, make it an effective stop. FBI statistics, active shooter, 46% of those, if I go back to my numbers, are hap, 69% of those instances are happening in five minutes or less, even with on-campus police in a building. To get a call, to dispatch, for dispatch to understand, to get an officer dispatched, and then to the active shooter, but, and you have individuals here that know these pieces, that's in many cases going to be behind the time that these things happen. So again, please make it restrictive in the number of areas, if at all, especially here on campus at the moment.
All right. Two things, because we have to leave, because the class is coming, coming here and learn our awesome stuff, probably stuff that is way beyond my mental capacity, criminal justice professors, so. So I feel like there probably is still some comments out there. Please use our web form, our email address, get it to us. Second thing, thank you for your time. I really appreciate you coming out on Friday and giving us your thoughts, and have a great weekend.